Okay, guys, we're gonna call the public hearing for April 11th, 2017 to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Yeah.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here. Public hearing number one, please.
An ordinance to amend the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2016 through 2017 in accordance with the procedure set within Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter. Dr. Lacy Landry.
SADA is still in training at Baton Rouge and on her way back with traffic, so this is our standard budget changes that we do mid-year towards the end of year. Anytime we are more than 5% off in our variations of the budget, we bring these to the council for approval. There's a link document that describes the difference in the beginning fund balances and in some of the line items, including sales tax, which is a wonderful problem to have, that you have brought in far more sales tax than budgeted for the year.
All right, any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you. Number two, please.
An ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2017. Public works, two meals; general fund, 9.04 meals; police and fire, 10 meals. The total is 21.04 meals. Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is routine that we establish, adopt the mileage rate each year for our property tax, and we are presenting that tonight to be adopted. There are no increases. Everything remains the same as it has actually for the past few years.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you, Jenny. Ordinance introduction, I mean, public hearing number three, please.
An ordinance to amend the previous ordinances regulating the water and sewer rates for the City of Hammond. Dr. Lacy Landry.
We introduced this at the last meeting. We are proposing, based on our revenue intake and our projected needs for infrastructure, to raise the water rates of the inside-the-city limits to by 12 cents per thousand gallons. As you can see, you have several handouts that were provided at the last meeting and then again in front of you. The first one is a history of our water and sewer rates, and you'll see a pattern of changing those rates and oftentimes reducing those rates throughout the years and then steadily increasing them again. We also added the user fee of $5 per residence in 2007, and so if you look all the way across, the rates that we're proposing tonight would put us back where we were in 1995, and then with the $5 user rate, your overall minimum bill would stand at $14. The second page that you have is a sample of two residential bills. The first one is the minimum bill, and that's charged based on, we charge a minimum of 2,000 gallons of usage per household. So people like myself that don't use a whole lot of water in our single-person household, we pay the same as maybe a very small family. But what you'll have at the top there is the very minimum bill is gonna see a 72 cents increase. That does include the water as the flat rate, and then remember that the sewer is double that rate. The example number two is probably a family of four to five people will see closer to $3.90 per month raise. The second example that you have, the third page there, rather, is a second example of commercial bill examples. So again, you'll see the minimum at the top, and then there's a second example provided of a pretty standard business. We tried to take averages to give you an idea of what the overall rate increases will look like for our customers. And then the very last page that you have is a page that SADA named, calculated for us. By law, we are required to keep 130% of the bond in hand to be able to pay. So what SADA does is a full calculation of what revenue we need to have taken in to be able to pay off our bond that we used for the $5 million of the sewer inflow and infiltration upgrades, and then to also be able to provide for the water and sewer department personnel and the regular staffing costs that we have in that fund, and then to be able to provide for capital expenditures. As you know, we have been running low on capital expenditure funds. Year after year, we continue to push lift station upgrades and other upgrades that are critical to our infrastructure down to the next year in hopes that maybe the next year we'll bring in more money to be able to accomplish those. I know our city engineer is here tonight, and he could certainly attest to that fact. But the legislative auditors even helped us out in this, because at the end of May, on March, I mean, at the end of March, rather, March 22nd, the legislative auditor for Louisiana released a report announcing that four out of 10 operating systems in Louisiana were in the red because they didn't charge enough for their utility rates. If you actually compare, we're not in the red, thank goodness. But if you'll remember, last year, we had to transfer $200,000 of sales tax funds into this fund to be able to even manage $400,000 of infrastructure for the year. This is a small amount to be spending to ensure the health and safety of our water and sewer systems.
Any questions from the council? One question, Lacy.
Sure.
Capital outlay, $1 million, is that, so are we expecting to budget $1 million going forward? So we'll have $1 million of capital outlay dollars for water and sewer throughout every year?
That is what we are projecting, as we hope that we will be able to do. With that, we can install new water meters. With that, we can do our lift station upgrades that are needed in several of our neighborhoods. With that, we can address some of the issues that we always come up against with the sewer treatment plant. Our large, major infrastructure that we have, we really have to invest in overall.
Okay. And what, do you remember what last year's dollar amount was? I know you said we borrowed $200,000, so the total was 400,000?
That's correct.
So then, in essence, we could be freeing up 400,000 bucks towards other capital projects?
No, if you'll recall, and this is what's unique about this fund, the water and sewer fund, all the utility money that comes into this fund stays within water and sewer infrastructure.
So maybe we're freeing up 200,000 there, in that case?
That's correct. Last year, we did transfer 200,000 from sales tax.
All right, okay. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Okay. You have a question?
Question.
Sure, sure. Question, comment, just state your name for the record and your address, please.
Good evening, council. Tracy Wells, 610 Mooney Avenue. I think it would be conducive to a public hearing if we can sometimes have the documents that you have, because she referred to documents, that's not part of the agenda that we have. So, I mean, that's just something to take into consideration when you're considering something that's being passed. I spoke to many of the elderly people in my community who are on fixed incomes, and they are against raising the rates. I understand that we have to have capital to change the infrastructure and do outlay, but you need to consider those who are on fixed incomes and do not have discretionary or disposable funds in order to add to their rate. So when you make this decision, please consider those constituents, that it may seem like very little money in the presentation, but for them, it's a lot.
Any comments on that?
I would say that I agree with her. 72 cents to a lot of folks may not seem like a lot of money, but it is if you're a household that's living paycheck to paycheck. So that's definitely a consideration to take in. We also have to weigh the overall needs of health and safety. You have to remember that water and sewer are your two most critical services that you deliver throughout the city.
Unfortunately, you can't give a discount to...
That's correct. The legislative auditor ruled many years ago that you cannot offer discounts to low-income or low-resourced households or to elderly households.
That was one of the questions I asked.
Okay. Is there any way that we can utilize this equipment to maybe project these handouts so the public can see them? Is that possible?
We could certainly do that, and that was another good suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, we'll try to do that for the next meeting, if possible.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay. All right, well, that closes our general, I mean, our public hearing. We'll roll right into our regular session for April 11th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here. Jay Kelly, would you be willing to lead us in prayer, if you mind? And then Councilwoman Beard, you're using the pledge?
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather, to exercise our freedom in this great country and this great city. We pray for wisdom over the leadership. We pray for peace. We pray for understanding, Lord, knowing that we're doing all to make our city better. Thank you, and in His and Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, as veterans, to render the prop, salute as we do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral law.
Are there any council reports for the group? Mayor's report, please.
We had a meeting today with Ms. Patty Riddlebarger, and she's with Energy. Energy gives the city after-school program for two consecutive years, $10,000, which we use to provide services to children who otherwise couldn't be in the program. It affords them to not only be in the program, but they get bused in, if they're in the Hammond School District, to the program. They get a snack. They get all of their homework done, and if any of you have stayed up with kids at night doing homework, you know that can be a timely task. They get a full nutritional meal. They get playtime, and when they get ready to leave, those that can't get bused home or can't get brought home by parents get bused home. We started that part of the program this year through the help of Mark and the school board. The city funds that bus driver to bring the children home. With that being said, the children are ready to go home and enjoy family time and get bathed and ready for bed. The best part about it is they're prepared for school the next day. So this is a program that, for $20, who could afford to send their children there, is very inexpensive as well, but for at least 50 children, Energy helps us provide this program for those kids who otherwise couldn't afford the program. We've also won this Cleanest City Award for District, so now we're in the running for state once again, and hopefully we'll get 11 years straight, thanks to our workers, street department, parks and grounds, who have worked so hard to keep the city clean on a daily basis. It'll be May 4th is when the state judging will take effect. We'd also like to thank Southeastern. We had the Southeastern big event, and they spent, the kids spent three hours helping us clean up the Army National Guard, which is on Southwest Railroad Avenue, down the road that we just acquired for our fire station and be able to do training. Also, the state fire marshal will be in that facility, so that's gonna enhance the North Shore for a lot of contractors in a field that I was in for many years, to be able to go to Hammond and enjoy our city as well as drop off their plans to state fire marshal rather than have to go all the way to Baton Rouge. Once again, our sales tax dollars, as Lacy said, are up, and we're very fortunate at this point in time that we're looking good with our budget for this fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, you're welcome. All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for March 28th, 2017.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Aye. Okay. There any, we would take this time to recognize any businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized, if you'd like to. You're more than welcome to. Okay? All right, resolutions, we're going to old business. Old business number one, please.
A resolution to appoint Jennifer White to the Hammond Historic District Commission from March 29th, 2017 through December 30th, 2020, to fulfill the remainder of four-year term. Mayor Pete Panepinto.
Once again, I recommend Jen White for the Historic Board, and would appreciate if the council would approve.
All right, any questions from the public? Questions from the council?
No questions.
Or comments, rather?
I have a comment. I don't see where anything changed. I still see this as an ethics problem, because it seems like we stacking the deck. We stacking the deck with people who are opposed to this expansion. I have no problem voting for, I have no issues against Ms. White. I've met Ms. White. She's a lovely lady, a beautiful personality. The only thing is, the issue that is in hand, if this issue had already been dealt with, if we had, once we had voted and the veto came up, if we had dealt with it, then I wouldn't have a problem with it. But because of the fact that this issue is still in front of the council, to me, it's an ethical problem, and I don't agree with it.
Well, once again, there's no ethical problem, because she can't vote on this. And as far as the district being placed into the historic, the district in this area, I think with the meetings that I've had with many of the residents, this is all being worked through, and I think it'll be back up on the table for a vote here shortly.
How long do you think that's gonna be, Mr. Mayor?
Possibly next council meeting.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Jennifer White.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
No.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
No.
Motion approved.
Okay. Old business, so number one, please.
A resolution to approve Hammond Express 2, Inc., located at 2280 Old Baton Rouge Highway, Hammond, Louisiana, to attain a permit to sell packaged high-low alcohol. The owner is Islam Abdul Nijou. Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. I do need to make a correction as to the owner of the business. Mr. Islam is the officer within the corporation that owns the business, so the business is going to be Hammond Express 2. The owner will be Hammond Express 2 Incorporated. So I need to make that amendment.
I would suggest that there's a motion to amend the agenda to correct the name of the owner to Hammond Express 2, Inc. Make a motion, Mr. President, to change, amend the agenda to change ownership to Hammond Express 2.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved to amend.
Okay, they have applied, yes, sir, they have applied for packaged alcohol, high and low. It is a handy pack, small grocery store. It is located on Old Baton Rouge Highway, right on the line, if you are not familiar with exactly where it's at. There's a little strip mall where the lighting place is on Old Baton Rouge Highway. It's across the street from that. There used to be a nightclub there at one time. It's the little grocery store that's right there on the line. So they have met all the requirements that we've asked them and turned in all their paperwork. Everything's good, and we are requesting that you approve tonight for packaged alcohol sales. We do have the owner and manager here, if you have some questions.
Okay, you can bring them up if he's here or she's here.
Do you want to come up, please?
We'll just need both of you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Islam Saleh, address, the business or house?
Either one.
22315 Highway 190 East.
Khalid Alomari, 2280 Old Baton Rouge Highway.
Okay. And just for the record, we just want to make sure that you understand that, you know, we discourage, obviously, selling alcohol to minors is illegal, and that our law enforcement team will always, they're very diligent in making sure that we protect minors, and they do check for underage sale of alcohol. So I'm sure you guys are aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the council? Okay, pleasure to the council.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. We're on number two.
A resolution to approve change order number two, final on Woodbridge Sewer Rehabilitation, project number 616-11605, for an increase of $1,951. Chuck Spangler.
This is a final change order on this project. It looks like this is change order number two. It's purely a reconciliation of bid quantities with final quantities. I will say hats off to contractor, S&amp;P Liner, and to Webb for handling this. This is a very complicated project. Almost all of the sewer in Woodbridge is real lot. There are a lot of individuals that we trampled in their yards, and most of them are very complimentary. Matter of fact, I didn't hear comments after the first week about how, you know, personable and professional they were with getting the work done, and we pretty much eliminated the sewer leaks in Woodbridge. So this is a final change order, change order number two. It is a slight extra, an amount of $1,951, does correspond with our budgeted funds, so we have plenty of money, contingency, to handle it. So I would recommend approval of change order number two, in the amount of $1,951 extra.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council?
Chuck, Mr. President. Chuck, thank you for getting this done. I know it's a long time in the making, so...
Webb did it. I'll tell him, Webb did it. He's not here.
I'll tell him when I see him, too. You're in charge.
He's celebrating his 57th birthday tonight. No, I don't think he's quite 57. He's somewhere in there. He might be celebrating yours. I wish I was 57.
Again, 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 for the second time.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, thanks, Chuck, appreciated. Number three, please.
A resolution accepting a substantially complete Woodbridge Sewer Rehabilitation, project number 61611605, commencing 45-day lien period withholding 10% retainage. Chuck Spangler.
It's the same project. This is the formal conclusion of their contract. It is in constructive use, and we recommend acceptance as substantially complete, withholding 10% retainage.
Pleasure to council.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
And number four, please.
A resolution to ratify and award bids received March 31st, 2017, for Phoenix Square Pedestrian Bridge Repair, project number 420-11718, to the Lewis Qualified and Responsive Bidder, McGee Escavation and Development LLC, in the amount of $37,625. Chuck Spangler.
Yes, sir, there are three bids. This is what the bid summary should look like, if you can find it.
We have it hyperlinked.
The low bid was McGee at 37,625. Our budget was 45,000, and I'll have to have Lacy to chime in on the, but this is 100% FEMA grant. We did have to put up some of the funds.
We had 10%.
10%?
Yeah.
And I think we thought might be 70,000?
Yeah, we had budgeted a little higher. We're under budget, so this is good.
This is a whole lot lower bid. This happens to be a contractor that's working for the drainage district over on Arnold's Creek, next to the African-American Heritage, and over there, all the way down J-Butte, if you've been seeing that. Same contractor, he saw the job, and he's pretty much, this is a very competitive price. So my recommendation would be award to McGee Escavation and Development, the low bidder, for the base bid in the amount of $37,625.
Okay. Any pleasure to council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Yeah, one more, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
A resolution to ratify and award bids received April 7th, 2017, for street improvements, project number 420-11713. Chuck Spangler.
These are extremely good bids, and I don't know what happened, why everybody all of a sudden got on top of this, but we had quite a competition. We opened bids Friday. We had 10 contractors pick up bids. We had seven bids. Our budget was 730,000, and as you can see, the low bid is Byron E. Talbot, who's right there on Robert. You all might know Tim Knockaney, he's a local resident, spends a lot of time at Spogus, so I hear. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, I think so.
Well, I better ask Jason, don't you ask Jason?
No, I think Jason, I think it was on Mike.
All right. Anyway, I was extremely happy with, I don't understand why the prices were so low, but I'm certain, all these are all reputable contractors, done a lot of work in the area. So we have almost $100,000 left to expand our street work, probably come back to the council before we execute anything based on our street priorities. Of course, we'll let's see how the job goes through. I usually like to get through about 2/3 of the job before we look at expansion, but anyway, I do recommend awarding to Byron Talbot, the low bidder, for the base bid, the amount of $622,200, $621.
It's a pleasure to council.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
I do have one other comment, if you don't mind, Mr. President. The Woodbridge contractor was S&amp;P Liner. The reason I bring that up is they're a local contractor, they're in Tickfall. We've had very hard or difficult time recruiting local contractors to do our sewer rehab work, and they did an outstanding job. We've had them from Birmingham, we've had them from Missouri, we've had them from New Orleans, from Harahan, we've had them from Baton Rouge. This is a local contractor. This is the best rehab we've ever had done, in my opinion, including the big job that we have in the Citroform, much as I like in Citroform. We're about to do some more work, if the budget gets approved, in Whitmar, we're about to do more work in the, from Mooney Avenue to Morrison Boulevard, in south of Carbon, sewer rehab work, and we're really hoping that they will get right and come get some of this work, because they've done a very good job. So I just think, see, Master Liner, at the time, you ever heard of Master Liner, they're now on, they haven't been any of our work, because they just supply the material, they don't actually do the install, but S&amp;P's doing it all, and I'm just wanting to make sure that I got in the newspaper that we're happy with them being competitive on our work.
Did you get that over there, Deli Star?
Yeah, I'm reporting.
All right, yeah, thanks, Chuck. I wanted to make sure they knew that. Okay, Chuck, all right.
And I'll let you know how my deep-sea fishing trip goes when I go out there with...
Okay.
I don't want none of these.
That was off the record.
I don't want none of these.
Take that off the record there. And, audience, we did... You know, if you have any comments at any time, feel free, you know, when we're asking, feel free. We're just trying to move the agenda forward. We know we have a lot of stuff on the agenda, so if you have any comments, anytime, please feel free to ask, okay? All right, where are we now?
Number six.
Okay, go ahead.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to renew the insurance coverage for the City of Hammond for the period of May 1, 2017 until April 30, 2018. Mr. Don Steele.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don Steele, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's that time of the year again where we renew our insurance coverages and, Mr. Post, you have it on your iPad.
Right. We have it hyperlinked.
The public officials and errors and omissions, most of this is in multi-line self-insurance risk program. The public officials, we have a million-dollar limit with 3 million aggregate. Nothing has really changed on any of this. Employment practices, 1 million with 3 million aggregate. Employee benefits, 1 million with 3 million aggregate. Law enforcement liability, 1 million with 3 million aggregate. Each of those carry a $100,000 self-insurance retention. The automobile, we have... That is included in our package as well. We have the fire truck separated and does not carry anything but a $1,000 deductible on the automobile, on the physical damage, and no deductible on the bodily injury portion for fire trucks. Workers' comp, it's an excess workers' compensation program with your self-insured retention on police and fire at $600,000, all others at $500,000 with a million-dollar limit. Page four is your airport liability. As you can see, the limit's $10 million. That is, as we set it up last year, when we got the tower, once we had the tower in place, we went ahead and increased the coverages on that. You have blanket bond. Page five, your supervisor's bond, $100,000. Commercial property, you have $25,890,000 in property with a $50,000 deductible per location. Equipment, you can see, you have $433,000 of equipment with a $2,500 deductible. Boiler and machinery also carries the same limit as your buildings, $25,890,996. Page six is your complete package. Total is $669,427.42. We were able, last year in 2016, to reduce our package by about 20%. Everything is flat this year, with the exception of, we picked up $700,000 in additional auto physical damage. Went from $5,311,000 to $6,220,000 and 10 more vehicles than we had last year. It affected the package by 3.2%. Other than that, I'm open for any questions you might have.
I'm sorry, Mr. ...
Go ahead, go ahead.
On... And I think this has been explained before, but on uninsured motorists and medical payments...
We don't carry uninsured motorists at all.
So if an employee is in an accident...
They're covered by workers' comp.
Okay. Including their medical payments and everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. It's a pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number...
Thank you, Don.
Thank you all very much. Happy Easter and blessed Easter to all.
Number seven, please.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to release requests for qualifications for architectural design services for Zemurray Pool using funds from Zemurray Pool Renovation Project 11717. Dr. Lacy Landrum.
I know we have talked about this project in a couple of different meetings and we have a history of working on Zemurray Park. As you know, the pool has been out of service for over two years now and we're looking at needing to put it back into service. And so the fastest way to get it back into service is to go ahead and release now a request for qualifications for architectural services so that we can get that design complete and then have the pool in service for next summer. That's our goal. With this, we could still have town halls to gather public feedback about the design of that pool or the look of that pool or understanding the pool elements that are most important.
And we will... And we're going to base that on the focus groups recommendation for the pool, right? Which is to make it into a commercial and residential pool.
That's correct.
We'll have a chance to do that later on. Okay.
Right.
Sounds good. Any questions? Pleasure to counsel.
So move.
Before we go, when we read number eight, I have a question on number eight, just to make sure.
We didn't vote on seven.
Oh, we just voted, didn't we?
No.
We just...
Okay.
We just made a motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, just before we read number eight, just one thing I want to make sure that we... I guess, I just want to make sure it's not left out because I don't want this to be... To go any further. When I read that, and I guess I read it for the last time today, it says that the park improvement, it says to use Zemurray Park improvement to fund the Zemurray Park master plan, but it doesn't necessarily say to release it, to do the request for proposal. So, I mean, the intent is for us to do that, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
So I think the language should say that clearly, so there's no reason to not understand that. We need to also say that we're also authorizing the mayor to release this for request for proposal, right?
You actually authorized the mayor to do that earlier.
Right. Well, I just want to...
We just didn't have the money to be able to...
I just want to make sure we add it in here again, just so there's no misunderstanding. So if we can amend it, if that's okay with the council, if we can amend it just to make sure it does also include to release it, not just to fund it.
Authorizing the mayor to release...
Release the request for proposal.
Request for proposals.
That is not being funded.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Can we do that, counsel?
Just a motion, a second.
Can we get a motion?
So move.
A second on that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
So when we read number eight, now we'll read it with that in there, please, for the record. Okay. A resolution to transfer $25,000 from Jackson Park Improvement, project 11710 into Zemurray Park Improvements, project 11708, and to use Zemurray Park Improvements to authorize and release requests for proposal. That's what you want that as?
To authorize the mayor to release the RFP for this project.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Okay. Any questions from the council? Questions from the public? Pleasure to counsel.
I would... One thing, just point of information, that we are...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I was just gonna... So that everybody's clear on how much we're planning to spend. That will place, what we're doing is taking $25,000 from Jackson Park, placing it into Zemurray Park Improvements, which already has $25,000, so you'll be authorized to spend up to $50,000 for the master plan for Zemurray Park.
Right, good. And then, obviously, if we release both of those, you know, we're going to do them in tandem, you know, we're going to prioritize the pool, but we want to look at the full master plan and hopefully we'll get people to bid on that and get some good things going in that direction. So I'm glad to see us moving forward on that and I appreciate the administration for getting that done and hopefully we'll be able to see not just the Murray... The pool, as well as Zemurray Park, become a very important piece of property in our city. We think we could do well, so... All right. Any other questions? Pleasure to counsel.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lacy. Okay. So now we're into final adoptions, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Final adoptions, number one, please.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2016-2017 in accordance with the procedures set within section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter.
Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, please.
Final adoption of an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all taxable property within the corporate limits of... City limits of Hammond for the year 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Number three, final adoption of an ordinance to amend the previous ordinance regulating water and sewer rates for the City of Hammond.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Jason... Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of ordinance in set public hearing, number one, please.
Introduction of an ordinance to remedy or abate chronic nuisance properties.
Lacy Landrum.
This is an ordinance that the city attorney and I have worked on extensively. We reviewed probably 40 or 50 different ordinances across the nation. What it gets at is trying to have better control over the properties that may cause us the most ill as within the city. Those properties that may have gambling, prostitution, drugs, other things that cause a public nuisance, that really deteriorate the neighborhood, deteriorate the safety of their neighbors and of the community as a whole. What this does is after three times that the city is called to the residents to render aid or provide services or provide an inspection, it triggers this within 180 days if the city is called, three times that that property essentially is red-flagged and receives a notice that they are on notice and that they have a nuisance that they need to abate. They have 10 days to produce a written plan of how they intend to abate that nuisance and within the next 31 days, 30 to 31 days following that, if the nuisance continues to occur, there are penalties assessed and they will then be paying for the extra inspections and law enforcement efforts that need to occur to abate that nuisance.
Just one clarification, Lacy.
Sure.
I know you... I know this is what it really means, is it's not just a call, it's a confirmation of the act.
That's correct. So it's not...
Right.
That's correct and that's a great clarification of it. The police will be on scene to verify that that is actually happening. There will be an incident, there will be an arrest, there will be something, some kind of motion or summons, a misdemeanor summons, that is issued to document what has happened. When the notice is made to the property owner, those incident reports or those inspection reports, if they're coming from code enforcement, will be included with that notice as evidence of the nuisance's existence and of its perpetual going on and on and on. So those will be documented and will be there. This ordinance also importantly exempts domestic violence. We don't ever want people to fear calling the police when they're in need of services. It exempts victims of crime. It is truly getting at the places where we know there are people perpetrating these constant nuisances and really bringing down the value of the property.
Chuck, go ahead.
Oh, the determinative piece, that includes the loud music?
Yes, ma'am.
Verify.
The noise ordinances in here, yes, ma'am.
I didn't read the whole entire ordinance, but I did want to ask a question. If possible, if we introduce this, can we put language in there that would allow us, whether we work it out now or in the future, that any information that we have that could be provided to any other agency to help them with their processes? Case in point, the housing authority. Because in many cases, if the housing authority has tenants in some of these houses and those violations occur, those violations could be violations that the housing authority would deem to be violation of your lease. The problem is that the housing authority doesn't have access to the information and they don't have a way to cross the data. But if we could cross the data, we could also help another agency and by doing that... So if there was a way we could tag that into this or if we wanted to do some type of mutual agreement between us and the housing authority, I think that could help us to help this process go further, to even reach the goals we wanted to reach.
Right. We are already able to provide the housing authority with that information. All of these are public records to some degree and so we are already able to provide them that information. We just need a list of the properties that they are providing that at so that we could confirm that relationship between a tenant and property owner.
And one of the things, as a property owner myself who leases properties, and I'm all for this, we go after a certain amount of time, the property owner. So if you hit me in the pocket for $500, that's... I'm gonna... Something's gonna happen. I'm gonna seriously think about getting rid of that tenant that we were talking about the other day that might be a drug dealer who's paying the rent on time, but yet he is a problem to the community or she. Then it goes on the property owner. And then, once you start hitting them in the pocket, then I think they'll make some good decisions on who's in their properties. This is something we've talked about.
Yeah, we've talked about this for a long time, so I'm glad that, you know, again, it takes the administration to have the will to get it done. So, again, I appreciate the administration for having the will to get this done. I think that lots of citizens, we've had citizens come to this council meeting on numerous occasions to ask for us to do this, so I'm just glad that we're doing it and hopefully the council will give me the support when we roll this out.
And I thank you, Mayor, because one of my nuisances that was happening at this shed, it was removed today.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. Someone moves... Wait, come on up, please. No, come on up. You can come to the... No, you're more than welcome to talk. I'd love to hear you.
I just request something in lieu of the public hearing on this ordinance. My name is Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive in Hammond. And, mercy, we need this so very much, but could we have the complete ordinance attached somehow to the minutes when we come next time so we can read it in full? Yes, so we can... So we have something that we can read. If it's not too long, is it?
Seven pages.
Seven pages.
So you can read...
You're gonna read that. But go on. Do you have any suggestion?
Yeah.
Right now, the ordinance is hyperlinked online to the city's website, so if you go
to the council meeting agenda and you click on this link, the whole ordinance is laid out there in full. We can also have some copies available for distribution.
Well, I don't want to kill a tree.
So, yeah, just go to the link. Just go to the link and we'll do that. Okay. So we're going to...
We need to vote.
We're going to introduction of ordinance number two.
We need to vote.
We gotta hear that part, huh?
Motion to introduce.
All right. So roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Thank you.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for April 23 of 2017.
Can we just vote first this time, that way it won't forget?
No. No.
Okay. All right, let's go to number two then. Let's go.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve amendment to ordinance 17-5499, request by Valen G. Washington owner and Alma M. Robinson applicant to allow placement of 2016 mobile home meeting all code requirements on Lot 6A, Square 10, Greenville Park subdivision, instead of Lot 6 located at 104 West Louisa West Street, in accordance with survey by W.M. J. Bowden Jr., Zone RS-3, Z 2017-01-00034, recommended, denied by zoning commission, Tracy Shalacy.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I was a mouthful.
Yes.
This is a previous ordinance you guys passed recently for a placement of a mobile home. She has since decided to use all her property instead of one lot. So our zonings are based on legal descriptions, and now that is changing, so she's asking to use her entire property. She had an existing abandoned home that she's now torn down, and she's just gonna use it for the mobile home.
So why would that have to come again? Because she's...what is she doing differently?
Because the legal description that you previously approved was only on Lot 6. Now she wants to use all her property, so that boundary has changed, and you have to approve the entire thing the way she wants to place her mobile home.
It just enlarges the property, right?
Correct.
And is it...did she annex all the lots together?
Actually, she's already hired Bill Bowden to do a survey for her. He hasn't completed it yet. That's something we can approve administratively in our office, and it meets all the requirements.
Okay. And you say she already tore down the house, so it say Mr. Mitch is some trouble?
I believe she did.
And the city's a money. Okay. Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
We have to introduce it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for April 25th, 2017. Number three, introduction of an ordinance to approve for expanded conditional use, request by Leola and Jessie Robinson to allow placement of a 2017 mobile home, meeting all code requirements on Lot 15, Lot 5, and Pine Ridge Edition located at 105 Grant Street, Zone RS-3, Z-2017-03-00035, recommended approval with conditions by zoning commission. Conditions are, number one, the mobile home must meet all requirements for placement of a mobile home and must be constructed to meet the latest HUD standards. And number two, the approval shall be with the understanding that such use is personal right that expires upon a change in occupancy or ownership by Leola and Jessie Robinson. And number three, the property must be cleared of trash, abandoned cars, and removal of rear...and removal of rear mobile home prior to issuance of any permits. Tracy Shalacy.
This is also a request for expanded conditional use on Grant Street. The first two conditions are the standard conditions for ECUs. The third condition, our zoning commission added, because there were some violations currently on the lot. The owners agreed to clear them...clean them up. She's in the process of cleaning them up, just isn't there yet. You have some pictures of the site probably about two weeks ago, and I have some recent pictures as of this morning. Can I?
Yeah, sure.
This shows you the mobile home in the rear.
Let's have everybody get one first, then you can explain.
Thank you.
Can you use a new color printer we have at the city? What was the price for each one of these things?
The pictures you have on your hyperlink were previous pictures. You can see the mobile home behind a mobile home that was in pretty bad condition. They've now started tearing that down. The abandoned cars are still there. Of course, the trash pile's gotten a little larger because you're ripping the trailer apart.
They're just in the burn there.
I hope they don't.
Is that truck being used as a plan, or it look like stuff going on?
Yeah, I don't...at least they're weeding around the trucks and cars. But they've, you know, they're aware that these need to be removed before they get any permits.
Okay.
And this is in a proposed mobile home area, so our board recommended approval.
Question, does it have to be removed before the next council meeting?
No, they said before issuance of permits.
So then we'll just be approving it based on...
The same condition.
And you guys will manage that.
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve. I mean, introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for April 25th, 2017. Number four, introduction of an ordinance to amend Unified Development Code Ordinance 145364 to provide relative to Article II, Administration, Section 2.3.5, Site Plan Review, Case Number TA 2017-0300005, recommended approval by planning commission, Tracy Shalacy.
This is amendment to our current Unified Development Code. Sometimes we find conflicts in the code, or some things that just aren't working. This happens to be one of them. Currently, you have a copy of the UDC that states no site plans are required for these particular items, one being construction of an accessory structure in a residential district. We issue...we review site plans for these things. The code says we don't have to. We review them for setbacks, for drainage. This is direct conflict of what we review currently, and we're asking to remove that from the UDC.
Well, we'll talk about it until we settle.
Okay.
Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for April 25th, 2017. Number five, introduction of an ordinance to amend Unified Development Code Ordinance 14-5364 to provide relative to Article III permits and final plat approval, Section 3, 2.2, bond and maintenance requirements, D, maintenance bond, Case Number TA 2017-0300005, recommended approval by planning commission, Tracy Shalacy.
This is also introduction.
Motion to approve.
Go ahead.
Second.
Roll call.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for April 25th, 2017. Number six, introduction of an ordinance to amend Unified Development Code Ordinance Number 145364 to provide relative to Article 10 Streets, Sidewalks, and Railroads, Section 10, 2.2, Street Geometric Design Standards, I, Case Number TA 2017-030005, recommended approval by planning commission.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.